Thanks very much. We'll call this meeting to order 7:01.
Okay. Okay, commissioners present and establishing a quorum are commissioners Blair, Lewis, Full, Dawkins, Lockhart, Walker, and Nugent.
Thanks, Leanne. Good to see you. All right. I don't see anybody in the, do you have anybody in the waiting room? We have a public comments. We allow three minutes for comments on anything not related to the agenda this evening. Okay, we'll move on to minutes from last meeting, September 12th. I had one edit. Section nine adjournment says on vote motion carried two to zero. That's likely six zero. Any other commissioners with comments said it's. We had a good discussions section. So thanks, everyone, for having comments and discussions. Very helpful. All right. Next item is, oh, let's vote on that. Thank you. I was just making sure since it's been a while, Leanne, just to make sure. Just. You always write on it. Thank you very much. Commissioners. Like to, oh, Melanie.
Oh, I was just gonna make a motion. I moved that we approved the minutes as amended from September 12th, 2022.
Thank you. Thanks, Kelsey. Commissioners, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Okay, on to the public hearing. Mr. Scott Peterson is here again, joining us. Thank you for your time. And this is the public hearing for the 2023 to 2029 six-year capital facilities plan. So at this point, I will open the public hearing. And let Mr. Peterson do his presentation.
You know, maybe a year from now, I'll have this mic thing figured out, but apologize for that technical thing. Good evening, commissioners. It's good to see you again. It's been a couple of weeks, weeks since I've been here and gave the original presentation for the, the six-year capital facilities plan. Tonight's agenda bill, of course, as you had mentioned, Commissioner, that the, it's a public hearing and follow the public hearing. You know, we eventually be looking for the commissions to adopt the finding of facts as presented in the agenda bill. The, since we did the presentation last week, it mentioned, or two weeks ago, we mentioned that there could be some changes between that presentation and tonight's. The capital facility plan that's in your packet did have some changes compared to two weeks ago. I was just going to go over the highlights. There were a few projects that moved forward in time and a few that moved backward in time, and that's a lot of that was based on staff capacity outlook. The projects I wanted to mention that were either removed or added that weren't on the list before, I'll just go through those briefly here. In the, in the realm of parks, we had one project added, and that was to update the Blueberry Playground Equipment on Blueberry Children's Park over there on Blueberry Lane. And that's really associated with the actual Public Works project that's been delayed till next year. So, you know, they won't be doing the park improvements until after Public Works gets done with their stormwater retrofits.
That's where all the drainage work is.
Right, right, right. So that is a delay. So, you know, they just bumped those funds to, you know, this coming year. Technically, I think it was budgeted for this year, but that's not going to happen. So that was about in parks. There's about a $60,000 decrease in what you saw two weeks ago as a result of that. In the world of facilities and campus in general, we've did some general fine tuning of some numbers. We added, this was mentioned a couple of weeks ago, too, that we added the police station facility evaluation phase one. So that was added to next year's portion of the biennial budget. It was about $350,000. And again, we did some fine tuning on some cost for the municipal court in general. Oh, and then we also removed electric vehicle charging stations from the list. As a result, there was probably a delta of about a million dollars. Decrease, sorry. In the street fund, we looked at, we added Powell Street Reconstruction. That's another project that we were hoping to get off the ground this fall, but the timing isn't very conducive now. So we're going to start that one early spring next year. So because of that, the Powell Funds are now showing up in the 2023 Capital Facility Plan. So that, that was added to the list. Also added in 2024, we have about sixty, a little less $64,000 budgeted to go and re-rate our streets to check on their conditions and get them scores. It's been about five years since, at that time, it would be about five years since we raided our streets. So it's recalibrating our, our street management's program. So we added that to the list as well. Let's see, moving over to the water fund for 12, we didn't add or delete any projects. We just shifted three projects a couple of years so that we, and that's based on staff capacity. So as a result, some of those projects are heavy hitters. So they just moved into the future a little bit further. But as a result, the biennium coming up will be about $5 million less than water capital expenditures. So that's based on staffing. Sewer, there's a couple more funds here. Sewer Fund, Fund 422, we moved one project, you know, back a year, and that resulted in about 300,000 less than planned expenditures in the sewer for the biennium coming up. And then Stormwater, really, just a little bit of tweaking with numbers, but nothing's really changed in our Stormwater Fund. So again, the draft, the capital facility plan is in your packet. And then, excuse me. As, as we talked about tonight, staff have developed the findings of facts, and I was going to hand it over to Kate to kind of go through that with you.
And also note that if you have questions for parks, Ben Swanson is here to answer questions this evening. For the findings of fact, just an overview, there was one final review after the packet went out. So the revisions are very specific to typos. The two of them are changing the budget from the 2023 budget to the 2023 slash 2024 biennium budget, which will be our first one ever. And then there were some areas where it referred to a code amendment when this is actually an amendment to the comprehensive plan. Other pieces remain the same. And I didn't know if you wanted to ask Ben any questions.
I definitely would like to ask Mr. Swanson questions. We hardly ever get to see him anymore. So, so Ben, I noticed last meeting, maybe about 21 million in voter-approved dollars for parks. Borrowing costs are obviously, you know, substantially higher than they were a couple of years ago.
Right.
Is that going to impact the way you go to voters and/or the dollars that you ask them to approve?
It, it's definitely an element of it. The other thing that we watch out for is we try not to go out for a bond at the same time as another entity or jurisdiction, you know, fire schools, those kind of things. We try to offset the year to overwhelm the voters with, with essentially bond choices or compete against another entity's priorities. So that's probably one of the larger pieces of it. To your point, yes, it absolutely will you know, our, our overall game plan of what we're looking at, you know, see two years ago, when we were actually, it was over two years ago, it was pre-COVID, when we were looking to go out for this bond initially, then COVID hit and we decided to go back. So it will impact what you see on the capital facilities. I do not believe it will impact any of those, any of those numbers, but some other items are, are items further down the road.
Thank you. We're having just a little bit of trouble hearing you, but so can you just tell us, is it going to impact the fact that you're going to need to ask the voters for more, or you're going to scale back on your investment?
Investment.
Got that. Thank you. Commissioners, questions for parks?
So for the acquisitions, I believe that it does say like Northwest Annexation Acquisition. It also talks about a North Kelsey Park design. So I know that some of the things you can't be specific on because maybe there's not an actual place picked out yet, but for North Kelsey, for instance, since it's called out, is there a location that's cited for that? I'm asking because I want, I'm trying to figure out where we're attempting to acquire more park places because that's a real big priority for the community.
Right. So the, the North Kelsey Park design, the city actually already owns the parcel. It's a stormwater parcel. And so right now, it's an open area with stormwater vaults underneath. So similar to the Blueberry Park design that, that Scott Peterson was talking to you about, where they're putting vaults underneath, putting dirt back over the top, and it'll still be an, an open play area. That's essentially what's existing over at North Kelsey. And so our goal is to essentially activate that site and bring in some type of, you know, benches and, you know, one of the concepts we looked at was, you know, a, a concrete pad where you could park a stage so they could do, you know, a small entertainment venue, something like that. Obviously, that's very much dependent on when the properties develop out to. One of the things that if you noticed years ago, probably 2018, the city did a code amendment to allow residential over in that area. And again, the big thought behind that was to, we need people. We, we have businesses going over there. We need people in the area to, to give some sense of life to it. And so the thought is, is to turn that stormwater area into a park. And so it's right on the corner there next to Red Robinish area on that side of the street.
So not the area that has like trees and like a slope that's closer to Chain Lake? And US Bank, what?
Chippy Loop?
Yeah, so over, it's a different area, flat space. Okay, so that's contingent. That's contingent on, I mean, is that, that's in the plan though, right? Because we already own it?
Correct, correct. Correct. And then, and then Commissioner Blair, you had mentioned, and we had a conversation and just to, so let the rest specifically why are parks in the northwest and northeast aren't identified as a parcel right now because they're in our urban growth area and we haven't annexed them yet, or annexed that area. And so until we actually annex it or establish a boundary, difficult to buy a parcel. One thing the city could do is we could buy a parcel just outside city limits and do what's called a municipal annexation and bring it in. That's one of the big reasons why it hasn't been identified. And then the other part is, once the city does identify a parcel, just for purposes of negotiating, we don't make that known to the public until we go to the negotiation part of it. That way, the person that we're negotiating against doesn't have an unfair advantage and, you know, knowing that we're looking at that parcel and can, you know, raise the price substantially.
So for this parks plan, there is an expansion likely to happen downtown with North Kelsey. But really nowhere else, right? What I'm looking at is we're trying to more densely populate the downtown areas. And yes, we have Sky River Park and we have Frylands, but we've got a whole missing middle area that does not have much access to parks. And the school district does have a large area inside of the area I'm speaking of that if it's not listed on our parks plan, we can't, we would not be able to take action to acquire that if it ever came up in the next six years. Is that right?
Correct. It, it wouldn't be a priority. And, and let me back up a little bit on how we even developed the, these recommendations over the, for the six-year CIP. So these are taken off our Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan that was adopted in January this year. And so those are adopted every six years. And it was about a two, three-year process that we went to, to create that pros plan. And at the time, we had, had some of the top input from residents as far as number of people commenting on the plan out of anything that we had done since then. I believe the Imagine Mino eclipsed us by a few hundred people, but we had some great public input on it. And so it's a combination of both public input and then service area for residents. And so what you take and depending on the, the park classification, you develop essentially a service area for those things. That's why that North Hill parcel that the city purchased was such a high priority and had been a high priority for 10 years. Knowing that growth was going to develop up there and there weren't parks to serve those residents that were going up there. Where we weren't focused so much on essentially the downtown area because based on past and present pros plans, there were parks within service areas for those residents to walk to. That said, in the next round, when we go through the next pros plan, which is probably going to be about, I don't know, maybe four years, five years from now, or probably four years, we'll get started on it from now. If those are a priority during that time, and we do hear a lot of input from, from the residents as we go through this plan, then it'll be incorporated into the pros plan and subsequently put on our capital facilities left. And so that's where all of these projects, the exception of like public art, that was something that council decided that they wanted to contribute $10,000 a year towards public art in the, throughout Monroe. We found that $10,000 was too small the number. So we started doing it every two years, making it 20,000. Those kinds of things you will find in the pros plan. But these bigger ones that you see on the list, the majority of them, there is an EDAB recommendation in here, or a couple of EDAB recommendations. The majority of our, or all of our acquisition will be identified in the pros plan. And so that's where we have, that's our guiding light or our direction when we depending on these things. What is the priority? Because it's already gone through the public, gone through the process from council.
So are you saying since the pros plan is already adopted, that there would be no way to add anything else to the, to this because those priorities didn't identify downtown as a need?
Well, we would have to go back and, and taking a look at it. So as far as just, as far as adding it on to the list, it wouldn't be, I guess, true to the plan and the public input that was associated with it if we just added it on.
Just going off of, you did mention Imagine Monroe, and that was a huge, you know, having community, community spaces and, and highlighting downtown and rehabilitating downtown was a major priority that people identified. And I think that sometimes they don't know the, these different steps of when to give their input correctly. And the other thing I just want to mention is that they, again, if we're trying to plan where growth is going to be, and in six years, those places and properties may not be available, and we would then have not offered adequate green space and parks for the residents we're trying to densify the areas for. So I am, I do have hesitation only because I don't, I don't see any downtown parks identified. So I'm done.
Let's do it. We're going to allow three minutes for individual speakers. Like to get a motion to open public testimony portion.
I make a motion that we open up the public testimony portion.
Jake?
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. Commissioners in favor to open the public testimony portion of the public hearing?
Aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes. So I'm assuming since there is no one in the waiting room, that we have no public testimony. Excellent. So I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Thanks, Melanie.
I move that we close the public testimony portion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Janelle. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So there's, at this point, we offer time for the commission to deliberate, to discuss comments. Anything else for either Scott or Ben? Yes, Jake?
Yeah, I'm not sure which of you guys to direct this to, but if the project, the budget items that are highlighted in green that are funded by future bonds, if those bonds don't pass, do those projects get pushed out? What does the city decide to fund them? Or what is, what is that process like?
They get pushed out. When you see the, the larger dollar items, those are dependent on for example, this year, we were trying to do the first stage of the North Hill Park, and that was roughly a $5 million project. The city would have been responsible for essentially 2.5 million of that. We did not receive the, the funds. We didn't rank high enough to receive those state and federal dollars for that development. So the majority of what you see when you get into the millions is largely dependent either on grant funds of, of a matching or in this case, pond for a lot of those.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And then what, what is Lake Thai Phase Two? I'm sorry.
So Lake Thai Phase Two, that was done as part, or those elements were part of the, I don't know if you remember it, again, I think it was 2017. The Cadman Lake Thai Master Plan, they, they went out with public input. Incorporated and developed a master plan for the, for both of those. And so part of that with the, with the Lake Thai is doing additional improvements. You, if you've seen the courts down there, the tennis courts, specifically the basketball courts, those things are, are in desperate need of, of, of repair.
Thank you.
Melanie?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, when the, when the facilities plan is being developed overall, is there conversation and like discussion or meetings that happen with other area municipalities, like the county and the school district or anybody else? What kind of inputs do we take from them during this process?
We take quite a bit. The school district, for example, we work very closely with because the Lake Thai fields during school hours, the school district uses it, and then during off hours, then it's open to the general public. So we work with them quite a bit on that. The county's also another big one that we work with because even though we have city limits around us, the recreational opportunities that people enjoy, you know, really don't recognize a city limits. And so we try, you know, A, not to duplicate something that the county's going to do. And he encouraged the county specifically at the fairgrounds to do things that we don't necessarily may not have. If you remember the past bond measure that passed within the city of Monroe, it was a, it was a Parks District Bond. So it went way beyond all the way out to Maltby Park Area Bond. It passed inside the city overall failed. We had worked with the, with Snohomish County, and one of their things as part of that bond was to put a splash pad over at, over at the fairgrounds out front there. And so that would have been an element that we don't necessarily have within the city, but is basically within the city for residents to enjoy.
Thank you. I appreciate it. My kids enjoy the playgrounds over at Frylands. And so that kind of partnership is what I was hoping continues all the time. And yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Question? This is, we can ask either person, right? I have a question about the remodel for the city hall. That, that right now is a good time for that, too? Right? Okay. So I know that you were saying it's about office space and things like this. You know, with the big push for people working from home, there's other municipalities that are actually shrinking their office spaces. Has that, since this is kind of fairly new with COVID in the last year, about this work from home change, does that, has that been discussed as impacting the need and maybe not the need for so much office space here?
I can answer part of that. And Scott, jump in if I'm missing something. It was, and that was actually before the remodel ever started. That was a big thing that we're looking at is who can just basically flatwork from home. And then do we develop kind of these flex space hybrid areas that, that people can work from? And that's actually included in a way in the, in the remodel. It will house and will have some surplus room for additional employees as they get hired. But we are designing it also to have kind of these, they're cubes, but they can be translated into flex spaces. And what we're looking at is, this is probably the la, you know, the last remodel you're going to see of that building for the next 50 years. And so we're really trying to think out that far of how many more employees and, and how we can accommodate. So things such as now, a lot of us are flexing right now and either have kind of a temporary office space that we're working in and out of. That will continue, continue on, but to be, I guess, I don't want to mislead you and say that people will have to flex spaces. There will be office spaces for everyone that that model will continue on. So it has been looked at. And like I said, building it, now we're building it for the next 50 years.
And the cost that, the, like, is that factoring in the current high rate of building materials? Or is that likely to go up or have to cut stuff out of the remodel?
That's a great question, Scott. I, I'm, I'm half guessing on this. I, I believe just based on timing, all of the prices were pulled together actually at the height of the building materials. And so or Scott, do you know?
I could, there we go. I was just turning at this light. Sorry. Yeah, so we have, you know, Mig Architects are working with us to develop the plans. Part of that estimate or process is to include material costing. And we, we rely on the professionals based on what we're looking at for the interior remodel and construction. We're looking at cost data. You know, it's a big question about, you know, as, as the Fed's attempt to kind of control inflation and bring it back down, will the prices normalize? Will they come back down? Are we going to still stay high? You know, those are, those are all things. We, these numbers that we have in tonight's presentation are slightly different. I think overall, they're a little bit less than we had two weeks ago. And that kind of reflects us making a little adjustment on, you know, the cost trending for this remodel. So we, we do have that. And, and going back to also the hybrid model, we do have flex schedules or, you know, remote work policy enacted and it's here to stay. It wasn't just a thing for COVID. This is something we're going to carry long term. But on top of that, as Ben mentioned, this is going to be a remodel that's going to last a long time. And it includes the growth of the city, includes increased number of staff based on the growth of the city and the regulations that keep coming, you know. So we, we've gone through a few exercises with the architects where we've, we've looked at who do we have now in the programming? Who are we going to need additional staff in the future? And on top of that, are these people that their job is boots on the ground? They have to be here, you know, they have to have an office space. And then there's other people who can do a partial remote, who can do how much remote, you know, so the, all of that has been factored into, into the whole, into the future. The campus isn't, I believe the campus isn't being set up to where everyone has that traditional four-walled office space. You know, it's, it's not that simple. It's a lot more complex in the planning. And it includes hybrid work schedules.
Comfortable knowing the 50-year progression and the, all the thought out stuff like that.
And you're, the intention of architects, everyone involved, was to keep city hall, police, public works in a fairly close proximity to each other.
Yeah. And there's also the courts, one of the, one of the big.
But not here, but close.
They'll be here. Yeah. See, one of the big issues is having courts and, and council and everyone kind of fighting over the same space. And there's a lot of conflict with this. So there will be, as part of this remodel, a separate court area.
Right.
So.
Right. But it won't be in the council chambers.
No.
Exactly. Okay.
Correct. So we'll have new facilities within this overall compound, but we're all going to be right here. We're not going to be spread all over the city.
Good.
Do you think it's possible that we hit like 60 or 90% of the copy to the planning commission?
Possible, sure.
I'm not sure what the design level we're at right now, but we gotta be getting closer since we're supposed to start breaking ground next year. But like, you know, there is some draft plans circulating, you know, if you guys are interested in seeing that.
Okay. Should we close the public hearing? Or you have other questions? Okay.
Since this discussion amongst us, I understand that re-adding more things for acquisition here would be a huge delay. But if anyone else has discussion points about why that isn't, why this is sufficient or, or just talking points off of anything I've said, if you think it's on point because I feel like if we don't have these acquisitions on here and opportunities come up, we would be letting down the public who thinks that we are thinking of these things. And we all know our comp plan is going to be intensifying the development more in downtown again. As we see every new construction that happens there is three houses instead of one traditional house. And the big thing I always hear from people is, you know, the parks in downtown, if we got that more vibrant, we would get that community feel, we'd get that, that vibrancy that is what people in the Imagine Monroe, which did happen to come after, you know, the feedback for pros plan two years ago, but I still think it's valid feedback and it's supposed to be our guiding light for our decision making. And without robust acquisition of more spaces, we will not be able to attain the gathering places people are asking for and more green space and parks in walkable to the downtown and making those connections from Highway Two to downtown.
Liz, do you have a comment for us?
Yeah, I was just, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Blair. And I was going to point out too, because I can speak on the two items that are related to EDAB. The festival lot, which the hope was that that would possibly be nearer than North Kelsey or at least as we way from EDAB had envisioned or near as best as possible, the downtown area. I don't know that there's a specific area designated for that necessarily, but and maybe Ben can speak to that more specifically. I don't know if there were specific plans on the festival lot, but the hope was to keep that more centralized. And then also that trail system of the ma, master plan connectivity to help connect more of like, like the path that's being added in front of the fairgrounds and stuff like that. So a lot of adding more connectivity so that everything is more connected. So that everything isn't feeling as disjointed as some things are now. So at least, at least there are some good things in the works that I think are going to help. But I do agree that there are some spots that do feel like we have holes as best we can fill those, you know, as the needs come up or availability comes up, but it's always that balancing act of how we fill those spots with city money and stuff like that. So that was all I got. So maybe Ben can fill that in better.
Yeah. So, so real quick, the, the festival lot, and I believe it's the same thing that was originally envisioned in the 2008 downtown master plan. Was essentially the, the gathering area. And we're looking at a, you know, a couple of different places in downtown to that festival lot. Since then, I believe it's just translated into, we need a festival lot somewhere in the city. And, and so, yeah, the original, the creation was through the downtown master plan.
Melanie?
Yeah, I just want to say that I also agree with Commissioner Blair and to follow that up with a question, what, what would it take to add the, like even the potential for acquisitions? Particularly in kind of the downtown core, what kind of process would be needed to even consider that to get it added? And how would that impact the overall timeline of things?
So we would, we would have to go back to the pros plan. Because, because again, all of this stuff was done in a large cumulative effort. And so it pulled together not only the information that we're receiving from public input, but also the, the data that uses for locating and determining parks as part of priorities. And so we would have to go through because with this money that you're looking at, this $41 million, the city doesn't have $41 million. It, it's, it's going to be dependent on bonds or it's going to be on a project by project grant basis. So what is that priority project? And, and like I said, with the, or priority projects, and like I said, that's what staff uses is the pros plan. And that's why we go through such a robust process with it and take it to so many different outreach groups. And we have, you know, it's, it's approved by, by our council and they, they go through it and then it goes to the state and the state reviews it to make sure that it's approved by the Recreation and Conservation Office. So it's a big effort that we go through to develop these things. And that's why we put so much effort into it because we want that, all the best knowledge that we can get into that plan. Granted, with that, not everybody's ideas are going to rise to the top, just like in any democratic process, right? Certain people are going to have priorities here or something there. And one of the, you know, big, big metrics we use development is who are those underserved areas? And they take those and put them on a GPS map and start drawing circles around them. All right, where, where don't they have the ability to walk to? Or where are we, these big gaps going to take place? Obviously, everybody wants more parks. I mean, that's, you don't run into anybody that says, I don't want to park in my neighborhood. It's just they're, they're good things. But we would have to go back and, and essentially analyze where this fits in the need and then how does it impact overall? Because if you go, if you remember back, and I can't remember who all was on a, a planning commission at the time, when we went through and developed our park impact fees, our park impact fees are based off our cumulative capital of what we're looking at expending. And that's how we justify paying for these, or charging for these impact fees when new builders come in. And so it's not, it's not a, it's not a quick thing. There's a lot of dominoes that start falling when you, when you go and reopen one of these. And so, like I said, that's why we spent so much time on this and, and effort and money and that, and developing these things. Like I said, they're done every, you know, every six years. So they're on a more frequent basis, granted, as frequent as people want.
So Ben, so Parks has limited resources for both acquisition and maintenance. So what would happen to the Cadman Park? If another idea was brought forward to, you know, acquire parkland more centrally located?
So we're, we're still going through the transfer agreement and, and the only obligation that the city has is to accept. That's it. After that's done, there's nothing in any agreements or anywhere else. And it's strictly residents of Monroe on what we do with that land. And so if, if, you know, I guess we're going through the transfer agreement right now and we're getting ready to do our environmental assessment of the site. And so everything goes fine and the city stops it. You can sit there. It doesn't have to do anything. Use residents of the city. And so that could be something that, you know, Cadman Phase One, Phase Two, you, you know, pull all that money off. We're just going to leave it as natural space, right? And then let's focus our efforts somewhere else. That's, that's entirely possible. As, as elected and applicants and, and everyone else, it's entirely within your right to do that. The problem is, is the plan's already been drafted and everything's, you know, pushing in that direction. And that's why, you know, going to, you're getting to update your comprehensive plan. You know, with the comp plan, it's not only important for the residents of the city, equally is it important to us as staff? Because those are, that's what we go off of. That's what council is the policymakers for the city and, and guiding us into a direction. That's their direction to us. Same with the pros plan. That's also the direction to us. Marching this path. And so that's when we start pulling them off.
So I'm gonna, I'm just going to really reiterate what Ben said. I don't know if you caught that, but for the Cadman parcel, the piece that is required is the land must be transferred to the city of Monroe. Beyond that, there are no plans or agreements of any kind that say it shall get developed into a park. The piece of the master plan, their reclamation plan, all of it just says the land has to be transferred. And then I just wanted to add one other thing. What you're looking at today, we do this every single year. The state requires just to look for the next year and the six years beyond that. And every year we have to update it. So we're getting ready, as you guys, we've been telling you since I've been here, we're getting ready to do the comp plan. If something comes out of that because of downtown, then we need to work with the Parks Department for the pros plan. So it's a cyclical process. It's iterative. So today, what you're approving, this is the priority today. And Ben is correct, the pros plan just got adopted. So it's, it would be uncomfortable to go back and say, oh, we missed something based on all of the research, all of the input. But in this next two years, we're doing a big picture look at the city of Monroe. And so something could come out of that, which would then have to cycle back into another plan and then eventually feed its way back into this annual update of the, it's actually called the capital improvement plan. It's the six year financing component of the capital facilities plan. So it's, there's a lot going on and we'll try to educate you the best as we're moving forward, the different components of comp planning and the different pieces and the financing.
So you're saying in two years, in two years' time, there could be an edit to the pros plan if we feel a need that came out of our comp plan changes?
What I'm saying is something comes out of the comprehensive planning process, we would be working with the Parks Department to say this became a priority. In your next cycle, as you're updating the pros plan, this needs to be accounted for.
And it would go into effect in two years or six years?
It depends on what the pros plan is. I mean, if I heard Ben correctly, that occurs every five years, every six years?
Every six years.
Okay. So, but I, the other component, again, appointed and elected officials determine what we do. So if something happens in the downtown plan, because that is also on the list of projects, after we get through the comp plan, changes are made, that comp plan gets updated, or the, excuse me, the sub area plan for downtown gets updated. In that plan, if it says we need this, and again, it's this iterative process, we go back to, council has to approve it, need to work with the Parks Department. And we come back to capital facilities because all of this, the, the financing is really in the capital facilities plan. So I, I cannot guarantee a timeline, but that is the process.
So if we could, if council directed something differently, it could have happened sooner than six years.
Potentially, but again, we have to, we would have to amend adopted plans.
Okay. Another question then. So you did mention that Cadman, let's say, like, like Commissioner Bull came up, thought, what if, is there alternatives to using the money that's set aside for Cadman? Or for instance, you, you could probably find a way if the public plaza became a downtown, that would feed, that would be a downtown park. So that would work. But none of these other ones, like, let's say the Northwest Annexation, that's not going to ever be downtown, right? You're not going to be able to convince somebody that Northwest park acquisition turns that into a downtown park acquisition, right? There's no like, you can, can you modify that, the place later on?
Um, I get, well, I guess if I, I think I know what you're asking. It, it all depends again, going back to the pros plan, what, what we had identified in the pros plan. And so it's going to be just like your comprehensive plan where when you develop your zoning code regulations, they conform with the comp plan. When we're implementing our capital facilities, it has to be before we change the pros plan. And so when you put it in. And then again, reiterating, we don't have any of this money. This money right now is a, a bond coming through. I should say 100,000. Larger items, it's going to be bond over grant.
I, I think we're just, we're just having a lot of trouble hearing you, Ben. I think.
Did you catch any of that?
Do I need to call Zipli Fiber and tell them?
Did you catch any of that? So, uh, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm right on my speaker. So, uh, so with the, with what you were talking about with changing the, the terms or the locations or any of that around, it, it's, it's going to be dependent on, on the pros plan. And what goes in the pros plan? And I made, can you hear me? Commissioner, do you give me a thumbs up?
It's like, kind of.
But Kate, do remind us, we recently saw a map of a Parks Plan Study of, with the radiuses, with the circles of how close population is to parks, correct?
That was part of the Parks Plan that Ben has been referring to. That included a lot of analysis about population proximity to existing parks. I can't remember everything that's in that plan, but yes, that, that was part of the analysis.
And I do get that, that on that analysis at that time, I'm just concerned because it's almost like that plan gets done before new work and new changes to zoning possibly and more density gets added. So then we're, we're working with old data in a way, because if this is six years and now all of a sudden we add a ton more houses to downtown areas, that number of the people in proximity to parks is, will be changing within six years potentially. I want to add one more thing on the record that I get it that nobody chose these areas. This all came from feedback, but what, what we're actually accidentally adopting. So like the North Hill Park, for instance, where I get that they would be farther away from other parks. So that makes sense on for the pros plan data, but those, all those people actually have, you know, a higher home value of than downtown. So we're going to be potentially, if the bond money, green money comes in, adding a park for people that can afford $1 million homes when there's kids in apartments downtown that can't physically really walk to Sky River or Frylands Parks. And they're the ones that are in the need of the parks. So I just want to be on record that that's, that's partially what I'm concerned about. I'm focused on the community first and impacting the largest amount of people for the good of placement of parks.
Let me get Melanie first and then you're next. Melanie?
Yeah. To piggyback a little on concerns that I have and mostly share with Commissioner Blair, what kind of impact did we receive from Spanish speaking families? Whether in the downtown core or beyond, I just know that there are several that are considered in that downtown core and then the, the greater kind of Frylands area, but mostly downtown. What impact did we, I understand that there were probably efforts made to include them in this process, but what input did we actually receive from some of those families?
Let me know if you can hear me. We, we did actually receive some really valuable input from, from those communities. We teamed up with Father Blair over at the church and that, and we brought in someone who is bilingual and also sent out surveys in both English and Spanish. And so we did receive actually some meaningful feedback from that. Our outreach efforts were so good that we ended up modeling those similar outreach efforts for the Imagine Monroe. So that's where a lot of that came from. And so we did have really good feedback from the Hispanic community.
Thanks, Ben. Janelle?
Yes, I just want to also kind of piggyback on what Commissioner Blair and Commissioner Lockhart were stating. When we do consider our Imagine Monroe, right? That's our foundation. That's our basis of the city of Monroe. Being a resident that has lived, that does live in, in town, and I do have children and I work with a lot of children, being, having a park that's accessible is very.
is very, very important, um, just to bring in like the child aspect, right? Um, it's important for children to have that outlet, to have a safe place to be able to go and to socialize with other children, because they're not getting that, as Commissioner Blair said, when they're living in an apartment complex. And so I think that to just, to encompass every, the community, right? Everyone that's here, that's definitely something that we, um, we should be considering when we're talking about where we're placing parks and, you know, so that's just, I'm new to this. That's just my little, my little spiel on it. Um, it's just, you know, I want to do right by the community and not just particular, um, specific people in the community, everyone. Those that have the voices, those that don't have the voices. And so I just think that, you know, us putting this, that like on our priority list to make sure that, you know, everyone has, as we say in Imagine Monroe, parks are accessible for everyone to enjoy. So we just need to make sure that we're, you know, living by that. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. So, close the public hearing. Are we at that stage, Leanne? Like to get a motion to close the public hearing?
Make the motion that we close.
The public hearing.
Thanks, Janelle. Do I have a second? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Now, I need a motion for action on the proposal. That's what you're here for. Action on the proposal. And I thank Scott and Ben for making themselves available to the commission.
Thank you.
Commissioner Walker?
Like to make a motion for action on the proposal?
And I believe if you have in front of you, motion D is the, is what they're hoping for?
I wa, I wasn't sure if that requires that second action, um, but if there isn't deliberation on the wording, I would like to make a motion that the, and I'm just going off the top of my head because I don't have the wording in front of me. That city staff adopt the finding and facts, oh, there it is, moves that the planning commission adopt the finding of fact and conclusions of law contained in attachment one of the planning commission agenda bill. Uh, authorize the planning commission chair to sign the findings on behalf of the commission and recommend that the Monroe City Council adopt the 2023 to 2029 six-year capital facilities plan and approve the concurrent amendments to the 2015 comprehensive plan.
Was that by chance, item D?
More discussion? Seems like nobody's comfortable seconding that.
No, I was just, he, he was reading off of something I was, it was impossible for me to follow along. So, C, D says motion to recommend the planning commission adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law, authorizes the planning commission chair to sign the findings on behalf of the commission and recommend that Monroe City Council approve draft 2023 to 2029 six-year capital facilities plan. And if that's what Jake said, I just need a second.
I believe that if there, if there can't be a second, if the second won't come up, then there is deliberation on the, the wording of the, the motion, and I could be incorrect on that. And I'd love to be, uh, corrected by city staff if so.
Okay. So the, the options that we have for you this evening are two. The first is adopt as is, or you work with staff to make a revision. However, we would need to know what that revision is. And this capital facilities plan has been very well put together based on all of our adopted plans. So I honestly don't believe we have a lot of flexibility. What I would encourage is, um, we have noted Commissioner Blair's comments and all of your comments about the downtown, um, concern about city hall. At this point, this, this is the plan. So we need, we do need to move forward, because this is part of the budget process as well. So the, the options we have for you this evening again are, um, to adopt the findings as provided that were handed out this evening with the corrections, uh, and authorize the chair to sign. Or the second is if you have different, um, changes to the findings of fact, we make those modifications and you give authority to Chairman Bull to sign.
Chairman Bull, can I make an addition to my, my motion or my comment on the motion?
Okay.
I, I would just encourage that if we are considering not moving forward with, with the motion that is laid out in the plan, uh, I, I would ask what exactly, what kind of revisions are you looking for? Um, because it seems like we're actually having issues with the pros plan, which to my understanding, that's not really what this question is about right now. Um, and then the city, if you read through that packet, it meets all of the criteria for what it's supposed to do. The city goes through and explains point by point how it meets everything that it needs to do. So if someone would like to explain a revision, what exactly you're proposing instead, I, I would welcome that.
I have a question. Um, when you said you noted, um, the concerns of the commissioners, is that when this goes to council, um, saying the planning commission recommends approval, they did cite the following, um, does all that go to them? That they had concerns of the following, that there, that this plan does not have enough downtown parks identified and that it does not, um, meet the equitable distribution of parks, open space, green space for our more densely populated downtown, um, compared to the more rural North Hill Park area? And are those summary of our concerns, will that be presented to council as well that in this case?
Make that part of the motion that the planning commission requests these particular statements be included in the agenda bill that goes to council. That way it's captured. They get their, they get your, um, minutes, but we can specifically add that into the agenda bill that says planning commission did X, Y, and Z. They made a motion, they adopted findings of facts. However, there are concerns with the statement. So I've got equitable or, yeah, equitable distribution of parks specifically with downtown versus the rural area in north, um, the northwest urban growth area. Is that correct? And density, that was the other question.
Um, the North Hill Park in particular, um, and because the Northwest Annexation, that might get confusing. I'm, I'm calling out the North Hill Park area is, has a higher income level than the downtown residents. And already has more green space in there. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, you would, um, Commissioner Blair, uh, request an amendment to Commissioner Walker's motion? Did that get included?
Do I have to reread the whole thing?
No, just, you're, you're going to say, I'm requesting an amendment. Would you let me say it?
No, it's okay. I'm requesting an amendment to Commissioner Walker's, um, proposal for adopting the conclusions of fact on the facilities plan proposal. Uh, I'd like the amendment to include the concerns raised by the commissioners about green space and parks for downtown, um, having more of those in the upcoming facility plan. More acquisition for downtown parks and open space, green space, uh, gathering places as outlined from our Imagine Monroe, um, guiding principles.
But this is a one for all for one thing, right? Because we're, we are changing, we are amending. So rather than have individual commissioners approach city council meetings and voice their concerns about this. Do you see what I mean? So because we all have to
Majority.
Agree that the parks plan is not right when we've already like discussed it for years and saw it two weeks ago. So you see what I mean? It's, it's just, it's, and I understand how the, the North Hill Park, you know, doesn't look quite right, but that land was, was purchased at a discount from a local homestead or local family. So.
In the past, when we've had a split decision, decision in the commission, we've had a majority and a minority opinion that went along with the findings of fact. So a commissioner would have to volunteer to draft the majority opinion and the minority opinion. And those both accompanied the findings of fact that went to city council. That, is that something we could do in this case? And then that could accompany it.
Sorry, the only problem is there, there is a time constraint. This needs to go to, um, it's going to council for introduction on the eighth, on the 11th, and the public hearing is the following week. Is that correct? Okay, so what, what we could do, if you're agreeable, is you make your motion this evening and we'll have to finish the communication via email if that is acceptable to the commission.
Melanie?
Yeah, sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing the volume of, um, the commissioners that are in the chambers when you're speaking. Um, that said, I, my concern with this is one, I'm of the opinion that, I mean, that the park, um, that's been brought up, it's not so much that I oppose that that's going in. I oppose that it's a priority over some others. So it's not that I'm saying that I don't want that park to exist. I just kind of want other parks down, especially in the downtown core to be considered. My worry with this is that if we continue to go forward and then we're kind of like, well, we approve it, but here's our opinion. I don't necessarily have faith that the city council is going to take that opinion seriously unless we vote in a matter that manner that says how we feel. Um, that's my personal worry with this. And so I, I'm going to have a hard time approving this when I don't feel like this is overall equitable in the first place. And, um, that's my opinion. Um, I want, I understand and I respect that there has been a ton of work and a ton of resources financially that have gone into this process, and I don't want to diminish that. But to my core, um, I don't feel that the priorities have been looked at equitably, and I don't feel that those align with the Imagine Monroe vision. Um, and so that's kind of my fear with this whole situation is that here we're going to vote for it, but with opinions that go to the city council, but then, then what? They hear our opinions, but then they vote it through anyway. So that's my holdup.
Okay, so a point of order, there's still a motion on the floor. Tonight is not talking about the pros plan. That, that was already adopted. What we're talking about is parks, general facilities, sewer, water, stormwater for the next six years. That is what's on tonight's discussion. I, I, I'm hearing your concerns loud and clear, but unfortunately, this is not the right venue for the conversation. That really is the parks plan. This is just a small component of a project or a plan that's already been adopted. So I, I feel like I need to remind you what's in front of you. And Commissioner Walker is correct, we've done our due diligence. This is based on plans that have already been adopted. So the best that I can offer you is a minority, a majority, minority included. So the council is hearing your concerns. But this is a bigger picture. This, this is a six-year capital facility plan. It's a financing plan for projects who have already been approved by other plans.
Jake?
How fast could we do a majority minority opinion if we go that route?
That would, that would be up to the commissioners that volunteered to write, to write them. And if that was a priority, I would hope that that would be a quick turnaround by the commissioners that volunteered to write those opinions.
Does that mean that, that if, say that I desired to, to write either the minority or majority opinion, could I use the recommendation as it is, black and white?
Um, yes, you could. Um, I, I think that if that's your guys' opinion, then that could work.
And then we have seven, yeah.
So you can't call for the vote yet. Oh, there was a second.
No, I don't think we did.
The one with the amended motions. We had the original motion from Commissioner Walker, as is, that Chair Bull clarified. And then we had Commissioner Blair request to make an amendment to the motion. We had Commissioner Lewis seconded that one, and that's where it stopped. We've not got to a vote. So if we want to go forward with the minority majority, we'll have to start over with a new motion because it does not match the previous motion that was seconded.
Really quick, Kate, can you explain the ramifications if, if the, if this plan is not approved in a, in a timely manner? Because if I, and this is just a guess, if we decided to go in, scrap a plan for a park, pick a different park, that would require an update to the pros plan, then we would update the capital improvements plan. We'd probably have four more public hearings. It would go through planning commission, then it would go through city council, and I'm sure there'd be deliberation on both. Does that sound like the, the right timeline, depending on what exactly we were proposing for action tonight? I, I'm.
I, I honestly don't know how to answer your question because the, the pros plan is a completely separate document that was adopted in January.
Right.
Capital facilities plan needs to be incorporated with the 2023, 2024 biennium budget, which is headed for introduction, public hearing in October and final adoption by council in November. So what you're, so to go back and do amendments, I, I honestly don't believe that's an option at this point in time.
I, I'm not, I'm not a fan of that option either. I, I'm just trying to highlight the fact that, to be honest, I, I don't really know what exactly we're doing here. If we're saying we don't like that there's a park in North Hill, what is, what is the plan then? I, I just, and I guess, Kate, this question isn't for you. I'm trying to deliberate with other commissioners. I don't, I don't really understand what, what's the holdup?
To find out, could city council move forward without us? Because it, we could be at a stalemate or, you know, if. Because it, we could be at a stalemate or, you know, if, because we were here to approve a budget, and then it kind of got sidetracked. And you know, but we had a timeline. This is a public hearing to move this motion forward. Revised budget from two weeks ago that we looked at, and it just sort of transitioned into something else. So I mean, could, that, that has to be a real possibility that the city council could just move forward because they have a timeline. They have deadlines that have to be met, deadlines. If there's any grant funding, they have to apply for all that kind of stuff. So.
So the third option that is not in your packet would be direct staff to I guess it would be disapprove. The findings of fact and recommendation, send it to council that way and they take their action.
But we would have to identify a specific. Typically, when we look through all the findings of fact, we have to find the one that we, we think it was mistakenly, you know, worded by the city staff, right?
Right.
Or it, it is not true, the statement is not true.
You guys are giving us a great challenge. I don't know, Ben, just from your experience in the last several years, do you have any guidance for the, for the commission?
Yeah, I mean, they, they can go through and take a vote, but Chair Bull, I mean, his point, his point's right on, and I and Commissioner Walker made the same point. I mean, if it's, if it's meeting the, the, the criteria on to adopting the, the, the capital facilities plan. I mean, what is there, what is there to say no to? I mean, I, I hear what everybody's saying about the pros plan. But the pros plan is under the review of the park board. And so even when that comes up, it's going to be the park board that's, that's, that's looking at. I appreciate that you, you have concern or interest in the pros plan, but like Chair Bull said, we, we are, we're scooting off topic a little bit. We're, we have the adopted plan. That's what council did. Those are our marching orders. We go through, we adopt the capital facilities plan based off our municipal code. It checks the boxes. And so you know, as a, as a commission, I mean, obviously you're free to vote however you want. It's just, you know, when we go to city council, you know, staff is
And to the, I, when you guys are asking, what are we doing here? We're off topic. I think this is a great, been a great exercise in us making discussion on things of, that we find important. And we didn't have input on this other stuff, as you're pointing out. You're finding a bunch of people who are willing to speak up and say, hey, this doesn't look like it fits with the public interests that I've been tasked with, you know, making sure we're on point with. If this isn't the right time and the right place for it, then that, that's okay. You know, we're finding out what it is, the right time and place, and maybe by us being able to have an opinion listed for the council to hear about our dissent, then that's maybe all that this amounts to. But trying to shut down the voice of us all having this discussion by just trying to push this through, I don't think that, that's very, very public minded. I mean, I feel like this has been a, a good exercise in all of us feeling like we're managing the, the right what do you, our, our priorities, the community priorities. And so we're not just trying to check a box and get this over with. We're actually paying attention to this and, and what the ramifications mean, and we're all learning something from it. So. I'm willing to write the opinion of the, the stuff I brought forward, and we haven't voted to see if that's the majority or the minority opinion at this point, but whichever one that is, I'm I'm adept at doing something like that, and I'm willing to do it.
Melanie.
Yeah, I'm also just gonna, as a reminder, I agree with Commissioner Blair in terms of this has been a good exercise. And we talk about this pros plan that was adopted, was it by the city council in January or by the planning commission in January? Because three of us became commissioners starting in January, and then there's been two other new ones since then. So in terms of, and I know that in some regards, I mean, we've got marching orders from the city council and all that, and that there's some things that are within a box that's not, you know, fully in our control. But at the same time, we've all come into these positions too with this Imagine Monroe vision that's been at the forefront of things. And if, if we're basically saying that we don't have much choice here other than to go within a box that several of us are feeling doesn't align with Imagine Monroe and doesn't align with the goals of equity within this community. I do think it's important that we at least speak up. And it's not to say that I'm not going to, I mean, I have, I have doubts about approving this, but I understand that there there's timeframe, there's legalities, and that this piece itself is not the pros plan. So I, I do get that, and that's still a learning curve for a lot of us, because this is the first time we've kind of gone through this process, which then goes into the big comprehensive plan. But I, I do think it's important that we are speaking up to say that, hey, maybe what got adopted in January could have been looked at from other angles as well and could have to make it so that these ultimate marching orders for us to do now with the finance part of it would have maybe been different if it had been looked at through additional lenses. But again, I respect the work and the process that has been done for all this. I don't want to diminish that work. I just, when I, when I do look at needs, and when I hear from voices from all, from all angles, not just the city stuff, I do a lot of stuff that's involved with like the school districts and everything. So I hear from a lot of parents and families in this community. And that's my demographic that I just have in more, in my circle is the families and the young families. Parks are a huge piece of what keeps us in Monroe. And so when I look at there being people specifically in that area that aren't necessarily being served, whereas, you know, this, the census just showed that about seventy-three percent of Monroe is white. And so you've got, I feel like it's really easy to squash and that, that other, you know, twenty-seven percent is just as important to listen to. And I, I worry that because of the voices and because there's a huge percentage that, I mean, it just, those voices can dominate no matter what you're doing, no matter how great a process is, those voices can dominate. And I just, I, I can't stay silent on it in these discussions. So. Yeah, that's kind of where I feel. So I, I would be willing probably to sign on to whatever Commissioner Blair is writing, and I apologize, I have a baby who's talking in the background. He's happy. But yeah, so I would probably will be willing to vote on and, and sign whatever Commissioner Blair is writing in the opinion, whether that's the minority or majority.
I don't know if mine's working or not. So my hesitation on this is that most of the budget is going to the campus. And I think, I, I've been here, I know that it needs help, like that it needs to be updated, but like for it to be the majority of the budget is kind of surprising. I don't know, to me. But like, I know that there's people that have spaces that are in the old jail, and this needs to be updated for sure. But like, didn't, when everyone voted previously and you were asking about, like, how to help the public, was that, I guess accounted for that most of the budget was going to be going to this camp to just redoing the building. And then, again, this is my first time seeing this too. I'm three weeks in, or whatever, three meetings in. So just, I'm hesitating to. I'm not jumping on this either, so.
I'm kind of like you, don't come to planning commission a lot either. But one thing to note that, you know, we see various funds with various projects behind them. The campus and the facilities fund is a big chunk. But also know that we've been saving up that money for that, and, and we can't sit there and take sewer funds and then move them over to parks. They're not interrelated. They, this, you can't do that. So. So the sewer funds we've collected and our capital fees that we collect for sewer funds are to fund sewer driven improvements. Not turn around and pave a roadway. That's not what they're, you just can't do it. So. We've had an approved structure by council to start saving money up for the campus. It's been building for more than a month, you know, it's been building there. And we're finally getting to a point where we actually can go forward and break ground with it. You know, we've been doing a lot of budget trimming and figuring out how to do the best of our money. But that was its own sort of ship that sailed and was gearing towards that. We're here today and tomorrow or next year, we're going to, going to meet it. Yes, on, on the paper with all the other projects here. Yeah, it's a big chunk of change. I, I totally agree. But understand, that's its own animal, and it's, it's, it's taken down that road. Another thing I'd like to point out is like, obviously, we know that the council is our authority here at the city, you know, they, they make decisions. And that the commissioner is playing an important role in being an advisory board, you know, with, they've had a public hearing. So they had discussion, you know, about it. You brought your concerns about, you know, primarily the parks considerations and concerns. And somehow it's trying to figure out how we can document that, you know, in the end, it's, it's an advisory to the council, you know, this was this is our view of the capital facilities plan, the, the funding outlay behind all these plant, these projects that we have identified for six years. These six, these project lists are fed off of, as Ben mentioned, his pros plan on our end, it's our comp plan with all the had a lot of projects listed in that document. So there are plans that feed the list of the capital facilities plan. And the CFP just shows that we're financially capable of doing these projects in the six-year radar. And we're going to come back a year from now and say, are we still financially, you know, able to do these plans? And we do this year after year after year. There's all these, this feels like a lot of checks and balances, you know? What's, what's the horse and what's the cart? You know, it's just, it's like, which plan came first? I understand that, call that government. But tonight's, tonight's view in the public hearing discussion is about recommending, if you will, to the council what your thoughts are on the capital facility plan. And we, we have listed two options. One, you saw the findings of facts were perfect as is. And you'd adopt option D. Or you have the opportunity to approve the findings of facts with your own amendments. All that gets bundled up as, you know, information we have put into the agenda bill that goes to council in about a month, in about a month. Not even that. We don't have that much time. October's soon. But I don't know if that makes any clarity to any of this, but.
It definitely helps. So thank you. And just back to what Commissioner Blair said, so these things could be re-appropriated every year because of not necessarily every fund, but like you guys go back every year and, or no, like you can't at all.
Well, if we, if we, if we talk about parks, you know, we, we see like Park Project X is slated for twenty-six or twenty-seven. Is there a way we can move Park Project X to twenty-four? You know, those are, those are conversations that help drive this capital facility plan. Different conversations like, we don't like Park X, we want to introduce Park B that's never before shown up on the pros plan process, you know? That's a bigger deal. That's a bigger undertaking all around.
And if, and that can be maybe added? Or no, like if it's not in the pros plan, we, till two thousand twenty-nine, where this is it?
Yeah, that's, in my opinion, correct me if I'm wrong, but the pros plan is the driver about parks in the city of Monroe.
Jake.
Ben, can you touch on what went into the, the pros plan? I think there was a few presentations at city hall and a few, few surveys. Do I remember that correctly?
We had, we had some, well, virtual open houses. Towards the end, they were opening it up, so we were able to make it out to some of the parks and have some pop-up booths out there. And then we did individual outreach. We had some committees that we had formed to ensure that we're hitting all segments of the population surveys online. And, and then the Parks Board took lead on it, and then we brought it to Planning Commission, I believe. For three occasions, and then went before the, obviously, the city council for adoption.
So basically, in a nutshell, it's approval with the way it is, approval with amendments. Or the third option that wasn't on there was, which is disapproval. Is that an option? I know you don't want to say yes.
So, so, I mean, you, the planning commission as a body could recommend that it not be accepted. Where's the, hold on my language here. I mean, you could say, motion to recommend planning commission not adopt the findings of fact and conclusions, actually be a redirect to city staff to prepare revised findings of fact. And recommending the city council not approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-nine capital facilities plan. That technically is an option.
So I understand this has been a long haul that I haven't even been a part of for, for that long, right? But as Commissioner Lockhart and Commissioner Blair say, I know that parks is only one piece of it, right? But it's a piece. And I'm just getting in the car with the pros plan, but I too have, you know, as, as I've stated, I too have hesitation. And I know that it's probably very inconvenient or just very just, I mean, because it's here, it's been adopted, the pros plan has been adopted. And then we're saying, you know, what, what our take is on it, and it doesn't really line up with what's in the pros plan. I know it's inconvenient, but I just feel like in my heart of hearts, even though parks may just be a small piece, and Commissioner Walker, I'm not saying there shouldn't be a park on North Hill. Because as Chairman Bull said, that was, we have that, we, you know. But what I am saying is that Imagine Monroe, a place where everyone has access to parks and what is it, waterways, and, and all that. And so I would be remiss if I, I wouldn't be Janelle if I didn't say my piece on the, the equitable and just access for everyone. But, yeah. No, you didn't. You just, no, you said that we got, got it cheap or got it discounted.
No, I was just telling you, it sounded like there was discussion that it was not, it was not.
No, Commissioner Walker was the one that said something about North Hill, but I just wanted to say, I, North Hill is fine. If we're going to put a park there, that's fine. I'm just saying we should have some more downtown. That's all I'm saying. And no, you just said that we, we acquired it at a discounted rate? Didn't you say something like that?
I thought that's what former Community Development Director Swanson indicated that we didn't, at the time it was acquired to, you know, help all of the development that's going on up there have a park that it was acquired at a, at a rate that was less than full market value.
Okay.
Is that a, is that a misstatement?
They, they, the owners came to us, and so we didn't have to compete bidding wars with developers. And so, so that's, that was the bonus that we, we received from the landowners because they specifically want.
Well, that's awesome. Yeah, don't give that up. No, we keep that part.
And that's the other thing. If you identify a property in downtown Monroe for a park, the, the market price just don't. So you have to, you have to buy it in the middle of the night, letter of intent. You can't. Jake.
I would like to formally rebut Janelle's implication. No, I, I do want to say it wasn't necessarily about the North Hill Park, which the story of it is, is awesome as well. I think the owner said, this is one of our wishes. We want our property to become open space and and that kind of thing. So it wasn't just about the North Hill Park, and I'm a huge parks guy. I love the idea of a park down. I love the idea of a park down downtown Monroe. When I was running for, for council, that was a big part of kind of what I wanted to do was parks in the downtown. So my, my kind of issue with the holdup on approving this plan is just that I think that we are, are dragging down the capital improvements plan, which is much less about our opinions on the North Hill Park and whether or not it's equitable to be up there or downtown. And we're letting that kind of idea shut down. If, if we read through, and I'll be happy to read through all 15 pages, it really checks all the boxes in terms of what a, a public hearing is supposed to do in this case. City went through all of the hoops to explain why it meets the comprehensive plan, why it meets environmental law and so on and so forth. So I was only using the, the North Hill Park example to just say, I, I, I think it might be way too minute of an issue for us to hold up the budget for 2023 on, if that makes sense. But I, I definitely respect what, what Commissioner Blair is saying, and I, I'm with you completely. I, I just think that there is probably a different approach to make make change that way. And I, I think we also have the ability after approving this, as was mentioned, I believe, by city staff, that a year from now, if we decide that it is a huge initiative, that a, a park be placed downtown somewhere. And again, we have, we have to remember that we're Planning Commission, not City Council. It, it can be introduced at that time as well and considered for, for the capital improvements plan's budget. In case I'm, I'm wrong on that. But I, I just wanted to, I guess, kind of wrap, wrap up what, what kind of my argument was in, in initially making the motion. Anyway, and I also want to apologize for how, how much I've talked tonight, so.
We've all talked a lot, Jake, so, and that's what we're here for, for a robust discussion. So never apologize. Didn't Bridget tell you never apologize? Talk all you want. So can we, can we, you know, put forth the motion to approve number D or item D? And then say, please refer to minutes and voice recording for the discussion related to parks and that.
I don't know that that's strong enough for what we were asking for. I mean, can we do a vote to see who, who considers it a majority or minority for the wording of the amendment language? For putting, like, just a statement saying there were concerns by the commissioners on the following from pros plan and inequity and accessibility and stuff, so.
There is a motion on the floor that was amended. The amendment was approved. There was not a call for the vote.
Correct. Do we want to move forward with that motion? Because that was the one that Chair Bull pointed out would have the concerns built into it as opposed to just including a minority and majority opinion.
So is the, I guess you could vote on it or you can let that motion die and start over?
Just to keep us all straight, I think if we are possible, it'd be easier to start fresh with the new motion and then vote on that if the commissioners are okay with that. To make sure we're very clear with where we're going.
Melanie?
Correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm wrong, but also if we have a motion and people disagree, we can, we can vote on it. And then if it is not approved, we can open another motion, correct?
The vote has not happened on the, with the motion. Chairman Bull could request a call for the vote, which is currently at their recommendation to accept the findings of fact, approve it with the amendment to, what was the amendment? Please refresh me. It was to include the concern from the commissioners regarding the parks for downtown, the equity issue, the green space issue versus what's already existing up in the North Hill. That's how it stands now.
And did you want to, did you want the amendment to say the wording that you're concerned about the amount, you know, of park space in downtown? Or did you want to refer to North Hill?
I don't really, the North Hill reference was kind of just built in for our conversational abilities to like, kind of put into perspective what, one example of why I think that it may be inequitable by looking at it from that lens now, when it probably wasn't thought of that way when it was being built up. Mainly just that there's not as much downtown parks as we think there should be. And that maybe it was, the equity lens was not used in the planning of this.
Vote with, on that?
And if we're, if we accept this motion, we're not doing our own statements, right? I would kind of rather do the statements.
But isn't it, if it passes, if we vote and it, and if we, if it doesn't pass, then will another motion come? And will that motion include a majority?
Yeah, then we can do that.
That, planning manager Turtolo just outlined. Or let that die, start over with a brand-new motion. And then we'll get a second, and then we'll get a vote on that, see where we land. And go from there.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to take a vote based on an amendment noting that a number of commissioners expressed concern with the amount of, you know, resources allocated to a downtown park. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
So. I, I'm sorry, I did not, I did not hear what you expressed, Commissioner Bull. My apologies. Can you repeat that?
Yeah, I didn't really hear it very well either. It's kind of hard.
That's why I didn't know if I should vote or not.
I know. It's hard to hear you guys down in, yeah, sorry.
All right, so the motion is essentially E. So the amendment would be that a number of commissioners expressed concern about the, the resources allocated to a downtown park. And so we're going to take a vote on this, see if that votes, vote could pass.
So it's voting just on the, with the amendment or without the amendment? This is where I'm getting confused.
Yeah, it's, so it would, it would basically be adopt the findings of fact and authorize the Planning Commission chair to sign the findings on behalf of the commission and recommend that the Monroe City Council approve the draft capital facilities plan document with amendments. And the amendment was described as concern about the one part of the budget related to resources allocated in the Parks Department.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, so now we're voting? Yes.
So all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Four votes for, three votes against, so motion passes. So I think, you know, any council member that was listening to this voice recording or the minutes are, you know, concise, quite a bit shorter. So we just have to encourage city council to, to listen tonight. If, you know, to understand why we put forth the amendment. Does that sound right? Melanie?
Sorry, my mute button didn't want to turn off. And as a reminder too, and maybe this is a way to do it to make sure individual voices are heard, but city council does have their own public comments. So we could always show, obviously, we don't want to make a quorum. So we probably have to make sure there's only a max of three doing it, or at least in the same room. I think you could be some on Zoom, some in person and be fine. But to just make the statement heard and how you feel about it. So, but I, I was personally comfortable with, with those amendments. But I may pop an email or show up for a public comment in addition to that to just speak on it further.
That's awesome. And thanks for remembering that, Melanie. So if anyone's going to show up, just remember the quorum thing at the city council.
And if I may, if, if all the commissioners that are planning on going can let Hannah, the Planning Commission Secretary, know as soon as possible, then we can put out a notice of possible quorum. And then as many of the commissioners that would like to attend can attend. And even if you're going to do Zoom, but you plan on speaking, out of an abundance of caution, we'd still like to put out that notice. So if you plan on attending and speaking in person or on Zoom, please let us know and we can just put out that notice.
And what, what meeting is that scheduled for? Because I'm assuming it's not tomorrow's meeting, or is it on tomorrow's agenda?
So I, I will send the entire commission the schedule. There, there's an introduction, then there is a scheduled public hearing, a first reading and a second reading. So I will give you those dates. And then if you let Hannah know which meeting you're going to go to, we'll figure out if it needs to be notified as a, that the Planning Commission would be there.
Okay, so Leanne, you think I'm at the end of my? Right? We done with the public hearing? Done, done? All right.
Appreciate it.
We especially thank Scott and Ben for being available to kind of bring us up to speed on some of the more detailed questions.
Good seeing everyone.
All right. We have some old business. And I was assuming at the public hearing that we were done with this item, but no, Kate?
Adopting findings of fact. That's it.
Okay.
For definition.
Okay.
And Anita is going to give you the presentation this evening.
Oh, there she is, popped up. All right.
Good evening, everyone. I, I wish I had some snacks for you. I feel like, I feel like we all need some chocolate or something.
Actually, we owe Ben and Scott beers, so.
Okay, so I'm going to present my first item here tonight to present the adopting of findings of facts and conclusions of law for text code amendments to the Monroe Municipal Code, Chapter 22.12 definitions. The public hearing was held on September 12th. No public testimony was received. The Planning Commission voted to direct staff to draft findings of fact and conclusions of law, recommending that the Monroe City Council approve the proposed amendments to Chapter 22.12 MMC definitions. The Planning Commission findings of fact is in the agenda packet tonight. And the motion for tonight is listed on the agenda bill, which is to move that the Planning Commission adopt these findings of fact and conclusions of law, authorize the chair of the Planning Commission to sign the findings of fact on behalf of the commission and recommend that the Monroe City Council approve the amendments to Chapter 22.12MMC definitions.
Melanie?
I know, we have discussed this so much. So am I able to jump right into a motion? Is that what we do now? Okay, because I moved that the Planning Commission adopt these findings of fact and conclusions of law, authorize the chair of the Planning Commission to sign the findings of fact on behalf of the commission and recommend that the city council, Monroe City Council approve the amendments to Chapter 22.12MMC definitions.
Thanks, Melanie. Jake?
I'd like to second that motion.
Great. Commissioners in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Anita. Appreciate your work.
That was an awesome presentation, Anita. Thank you.
Short and sweet. I do have the next item. Chair Bull, did you want to announce the next item, or should I just proceed?
No, I'd love to announce it. So this is new business. Community Food Service Ordinance, and it's related to zoning and the food bank.
Thank you. So yes, this is a new business item that I'm presenting tonight. It's regarding the Community Food Services Ordinance. So this item is actually on the Planning Commission's work plan for this year. So in researching this code amendment, staff found that incorporating this discussion with the comprehensive plan update may be more appropriate than adopting an ordinance to allow food banks in the single-family residential, seven units per acre, or R7 zoning district. As you may know, the city has one food bank that is the Sky Valley Food Bank, which is located at 233 Sky River Parkway. It's adjacent to the Boys and Girls Club. And the Sky Valley Food Bank and the Boys and Girls Club have a shared parking agreement. So this issue came up in 2020 when the food bank came to the city for a pre-application meeting. So what they wanted to do was an expansion of the existing food bank. This included an interior remodel, approximately 1,122 square foot addition, as well as site improvements, which included a second access off of Park Street. So the issue that we're having is food banks are not a permitted use and/or community food services are not a permitted use in the R7 zoning district. So essentially, the food bank, the existing food bank is a legally non-conforming use. So the food bank can continue as is, continue operations, and they're able to do minor interior work as far as any new construction work inside of the building. But expansion of a non-conforming use is not allowed. So subsequently, staff came together and drafted an ordinance, inter, emergency interim ordinance, that ordinance number 013/2020, which would, which was passed by the city council on October 27, 2020, which permitted community food services as a conditional use in the R7 zoning district. This emergency interim ordinance had an effective date for six months. Unfortunately, the food bank was not able to secure funding. So we did not receive an application for conditional use permit at that time. So in 2020, early this year, the food bank submitted another application for conditional use permit to the city. We were not able to accept that application until we passed another emergency interim ordinance. So that is ordinance number 004/2022. And that ordinance is attached to this agenda packet. This was passed by city council on February 8, 2022. The food bank then was able to have, submit their application, and they did receive a conditional use permit for its expansion, which was approved on July 28, 2022. So now they're just waiting on building permits so they can start construction. So kind of some policy questions that I wanted to. So kind of some policy questions that I wanted to propose to the council today. So first of all, if I'm able to, I would like to share my screen with you really quick. And I did want to show a zoning map of the parcel. So let's see if I can. Not sure if I'm able to share. Am I able to share my screen, Leanne? Right? Okay, perfect. So I'm gonna show you. Let's see. Okay. So these are the different zoning districts that are adjacent to the food bank. So this is the food bank parcel. See it's. Oops. Okay. So sorry, that's kind of covering it. But this is the parcel here in the yellow. That's the food bank parcel. So this is currently zoned R seven residential. So this lavender light purple area, this is mixed-use neighborhood. So south of the of the food bank parcel, this is the Boys and Girls Club in mixed-use neighborhood. Sorry, I think it said mixed-use commercial. It's mixed-use neighborhood now. And then this west side of the food bank parcel is also mixed-use neighborhood. And this is resident or residential and their duplexes. So the policy question is, if we go through with the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, which is to allow community food services in R seven, this would mean that food banks would be permitted in all R seven zoning districts in the city with a conditional use permit. Meaning that potentially wherever another food bank can locate there, and they could potentially take away existing housing units or future housing units, depending on the property, depending on if it's a redevelopment, a vacant site. So that's, that's the the con of that. The pro is that a food bank can locate in in more areas in the city. So that's, that's a pro for that. So as as staff, we were talking about it and we're saying, does it make more sense to maybe just rezone the parcel where the food bank is located to mixed-use neighborhood? So because there's really no plans for the food bank to go away anytime soon, especially since they're going to expand. I feel like they will be there for very much longer. And also, if it does change to mixed-use neighborhood, it still allows for, say, the food bank does go away at some point. It still allows for attached dwelling units and or mixed-use development. So you could potentially still get residential units here if the zoning changes. So those are some policy questions tonight that I would like the planning commission to discuss. Give staff some directions on how you would move forward. So the plan is to, if if you do decide that we would just want to rezone this parcel, we would take this through through the comp plan update discussion. And it's possible that we could have this zoning change through that process. So I would like to turn it over to the planning commission for discussion.
So Anita, this this has the, your recommendation to change the zoning to mixed use has the least impact on residential throughout the rest of the city and also would not be considered spot zoning because all of the other adjacent properties are mixed use as well.
Mixed use, correct. That is correct.
Okay, we'll start with Melanie.
Um, before we get moving on discussion, I move that the planning commission extend its meeting beyond nine P M.
Thanks, Melanie.
I'd like to second that.
Thanks, Jake. Yes, Kate?
I just want to give a point of clarification. The reason this is coming forward is when Anita was doing her research, we found information that Ben had put together previously, or it might even been before Ben, that was talking that the 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 goal was actually to include this in the mixed-use zone, but that did not happen. And so an emergency ordinance was passed to allow the food bank is a conditional use permit in the residential zone. This is not just. There's a, there's a bigger picture question, but we want to have the conversation with you. If you want to allow food banks in the residential R seven zone, we can go back and proceed with the formal process to make a code amendment. Or the question is, do we roll this zoning comp plan amendment into the comprehensive plan process? Because we're already in process with that. And most importantly, the food bank now has its permit. So they are not going to be restricted from doing what they need to do with the expansion. The other piece, I just want to clarify that when it goes, if you choose to go with a rezone comp plan designation, it's already a conditional use permit in the mixed-use zone. So that's, that's the difference. And that's why we're back here again this evening.
Okay, thank you. We need to take a vote on extending time. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all. Liz, do you have a question?
I just had more of a comment and Melanie beat me to the punch on extending, but but Jake was for me, but.
He's already apologized for talking too much. That's why I called him.
I let him talk for me because I thought on the other one was, anyway. Personally, I'm not in a big supportive allowing a bunch of banks to take away from more residential. That's just my opinion because we need more housing. We need more variety of housing. I don't think allowing something that would take away from housing would be the right way to go. That's all we keep talking about is how much more housing we need. I just think this would be the wrong direction, but I think making the switch that would allow the current food bank to be where it needs to be and how it should be is the right move for that one parcel. As you said, you know, they already have their permits, but I think it would make sense to move them where they should be. And keep them because we don't want to lose where they are and what they, what they do for the community. And they're a great location and a great site, being next to the Boys and Girls Club. It's a great community where they are. But I just feel really strongly that I don't think, I mean, I, there's a lot of value in having the food banks. I wouldn't deny that, but I think anything that takes away from housing, we have limited land space anyways. So that's just my opinion on the matter. That's my opinion.
Thanks, Liz. Jake?
Anita, is there any way you could pull back up that map?
Sure.
So are we, are we just talking about that corner yellow parcel, kind of L-shaped?
Correct, yes. We're just talking about the food bank parcel.
Any idea how many, what the size is of that parcel?
Um, let's see. I can get that for you really quick.
No, I mean, if it's like, it looks like it's probably a quarter of an acre or half an acre, lower than a quarter acre, sorry. Anyways, I was only asking because when when considering the weight of those two decisions between either allowing food banks in all residential or R, was it R eight or R seven?
R seven.
R seven. Versus turning this one parcel into mixed retail where if your concerns are, well, I don't want there to be some big mixed retail space there in the future. Looks like it'd be too small to accommodate that anyway. I just think that's, in terms of the weight of both options, the the latter option is way, way easier in terms of implications.
Okay. And the, sorry, the site is point four-seven acres.
Okay.
Almost half an acre, yes.
Melanie?
Um, yeah, in terms of expansion, is there, do we foresee, or does the food bank have any foresight into whether they may need to expand beyond that site at any point? And then also, in terms of expansion, I haven't, I haven't gone through there when the, when the food bank is like actively serving people. I've been through there when volunteers have been, you know, getting things ready. But what, what does the impact have on like the, because it it shares a parking lot with the Boys and Girls Club? So in terms of parking there now, what impact does it have now versus for expanding? I mean, obviously, I'm, I'm thrilled that the food bank feels it it can expand and that it's able to expand to serve more people, because the more people you can serve, the better, in my opinion. But I'm also just worried about if they need to expand even further at any point, would rezoning them now and not allowing it down the road in the other spaces potentially prohibit them from expanding even further down in the future, if that makes sense? I mean, I suppose we could always look at the zoning again if it really came down to that. But, but yeah, is there any foresight into whether they might have to expand eventually off their current site?
Oh, offsite, you said, okay. I don't believe there's any plans to expand offsite. The main purpose of this expansion is for mainly to 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 put in some administration offices. And it also is for some cold storage, to have more storage for for food and things like that. But as far as I know from talking with the new director, I don't, I don't feel like there's any, any plans to expand offsite.
So I have a, oh, all right. So I have a question. So I'm not a Monroe native. But has Sky Valley Food Bank been the only food bank in the community for like ever?
I believe so. I think they've been around since the seventies.
Okay.
Just from looking at their website.
Yeah, in addition to that, I did my own research to for tonight, and they signed the lease on this particular property in nineteen ninety-eight with the city of Monroe. That land is actually owned by the city.
Okay.
Then it was built, the current building was built before two thousand, somewhere between two thousand and two thousand and two. And then in two thousand and seven, the joint use parking agreement was done. It's actually a three-party agreement between the city of Monroe, the Boys and Girls Club and the food bank. So at that current location, they've been there since the late nineties.
Okay, so I just want, just to remind everyone, I mean, as the city grows, the needs grow, right? And so I personally have been a recipient, like I've gone to the food bank before. And it is a very, it's a very cramped space, parking even inside. So I'm, you know, excited that they're going to expand because it's very important to have those food resources available to families who need them. So my question, well, just like Melanie said, you know, I know that, like, as far as like, what if they have to expand past? Where we're trying to rezone right now, but I know Anita, you said that you, that when you talked to the new director, they didn't have any plans, but we all know things can, you know, change rapidly. And the need can be, you know, great, like even during COVID. I'm sure, you know, with people losing jobs and things of that nature. So I just want to, you know, make sure that if we do the rezoning, that there is the opportunity, you know, for, for if they need to expand even more, that they're able to do that. You know, and me personally, I wouldn't mind seeing food banks around town. The only reason I say that is because we think about accessibility. Not everyone has a car. Not everyone lives right around the corner from Sky Valley Food Bank. But I mean, for me, I, I wouldn't see anything, you know, negative about having a food bank in a residential area because, you know, people need food. That's a necessity. And sometimes they can't just go to the store and buy it. So to make it more accessible would be cool. But I mean, you know, everyone has their thoughts on that. But I just want to make sure that if they need to expand past where we're zoning, that they'd be able to do that.
Yes, so we would have to do one of the two options if the food bank wanted to expand further. Because they were able to do the initial expansion because we did the emergency ordinance. But that will not carry through. So we either have to do a permanent ordinance or do the rezone to allow them to expand in the future. And just another comment, so one of our residential zones does already allow food banks, and that with a conditional use permit. It's the R fifteen zone. So it does allow food banks.
Thank you.
Um, introduction and then just direction for staff and how you would like me to proceed, basically. Because if I'm gonna, am I going to go through the route for a permanent ordinance? Then I'm going to start doing the work for that. You know, bringing back for discussion a couple more times, the planning commission. So that, you know, usually that's, it could, it could be a six-month process, four to six-month process initially before we get it adopted. Or the direction to to table this discussion until we start diving into the comp plan update.
So is there any commissioners that do not want, have the rezone move forward? Any reason for the rezone not to move forward expeditiously? Anyone?
It would be with, so I just want to clarify, it would be with the comp plan update, though. It wouldn't be a separate rezone. While we're going through the comp plan update, that's when we would discuss, because we'll be discussing other parts of the city if, that we want to rezone as well. So just to make that clarification.
Permit for R seven is in effect until we we do the comp plan.
Correct, correct, correct.
Melanie?
And I'm sorry if I just repeat, because the volume for you guys in the chambers, it's so low on our end. I'm on max and I can barely hear you, but maybe, so maybe this is what you just said. But just to be clear, that the food bank as it stands is good to go on expansion if we just hold off. Okay, then my vote is then let's hold off and and work on rezoning that during the comp plan. That's kind of the the outlook, right? Yeah, that's kind of probably my, my preference.
Good. Okay.
Thank you.
It's Anita. All right, move forward to discussion by commissioners and staff. Start with Liz.
Let's see, economic development, we didn't have a quorum, so it was kind of a really impromptu laid-back meeting. We were kind of just talking about various interesting things that are impacting reasons why possibly things are, businesses aren't wanting to come into Monroe. And I'm not really sure how we can change some of the perspectives on how people view Monroe outside of Monroe. But it was an interesting discussion, we'll just say. But, um, yeah, not much was really accomplished, but it was a good wholehearted discussion. So nothing really was accomplished, but it was a really good discussion. So that's about all I got.
Thank you. Jake?
I have got nothing tonight. But I want to say thank you to my fellow commissioners for the lively discussion. I think we're doing our due diligence for the public and deliberation, so. And thank you to the city staff for bearing with us through all of that. And Anita, thanks for your great presentations, and that's all.
Melanie?
Yeah, just thank you to everybody for the presentations and for being patient with our discussions tonight. I know it probably took a lot longer than any of you anticipated, but I appreciate you listening to us and answering our questions and giving us the clarifications as, as we learn and as we continue to kind of move toward things that we're passionate about. So that's all, though. Otherwise, you've heard from me plenty tonight, so.
Thanks very much. Anything else for us, Anita?
Um, just that we have some pre-applications meetings coming up. And so there should be some exciting restaurant ideas coming. I don't think I can mention them yet because they're pre-application, but it's just exciting that we'll have some options, maybe. I don't think I can mention them yet, because they're pre-application, but it's just exciting that we'll have some options, maybe. Different options.
I'm posting on Monroe Facebook tonight.
Yeah, yeah. What a teaser. Probably gonna be something delicious, and we all want to know about it, and you're not telling us. Kate, what do you have for us tonight?
Um, I actually don't have anything. I probably just give you a heads up. My understanding, this has become a hot topic around the community as well as the city council. We do have an application and a conditional use permit for ideal options, which is an outpatient drug treatment facility. They're looking at the property on the corner, on the northeast corner of Lewis and Main on the second story. That process has a public hearing. It has not been set yet. The applicant just resubmitted requested information that was missing. So the public hearing, well, we had to set the public hearing, and then the community can provide comment at that time. Again, it's a conditional use permit. It goes to the hearing examiner, depending on what his decision is. It gets appealed to Superior Court. So if you have questions on that, feel free to ask me. There was actually a really good article in the Tribune about a month ago, talking about this very facility, or yeah, of this proposed conditional use permit. The reason it requires a conditional use permit is medical offices in the downtown, historic downtown zone require a conditional use permit. So if you have questions, feel free to give me a call or send me an email.
Because this is promenade.
No, this is second story, so it's historic Maine. It is not on the promenade.
Second story?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Kelsey?
I don't have much, except that there's that class on the twenty-six, or sorry, on the twenty, on Thursday. Um, if anyone hasn't taken it, I'm gonna be taking it. It's for kind of learning about this process. I don't know, did Hannah tell you about that? Okay, cool. So, see you there if you're going.
That's great. Good job. Randy?
Okay, all that for me, just to say I have nothing. We're already past time, so I appreciate everyone's time and tonight and discussion, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Janelle?
I don't have much. Just thank you. This is my first in-person planning, planning commission meeting, and I already feel like I've learned a lot. Thank you for the patience, the explaining of everything, and I'm just, I, I really look forward to being a part of this commission and being able to just make Monroe more amazing. So, um, yeah, I'm really glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for you, possibly you, maybe you. So we talked a lot about Imagine Monroe, and earlier today, I was looking for the completed finished document. Is there one?
Imagine Monroe is, if you go to our website, that statement, it's the very first thing you see on the right-hand side. It's front and center on the website. Are you looking for like a signed version from?
Well, no, I was just thinking there would be a number of, because there was a few things that were sent out to the public, right? But I was just thinking there was, there would be, there's surveys there. I was just thinking there would be a number of things, pages that we would include with, you know, these comprehensive plans, because that's basically how we're gonna look at the comprehensive plan, is we look at Imagine Monroe, and then we look at what we did for the comprehensive plan, and then we kind of meld them together to get a new comprehensive plan. But it's really not a document, it's just an essence. I've learned about essence as a bastard college. It's, you know what I mean? It's the essence of, yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's a statement, if that makes sense.
Okay, but there's no
Not a written report, no. No.
Okay.
No, just the one statement.
Thank you very much.
Long statement.
Okay. And then let's finish with Leanne.
I don't think I have anything.
Thank you so much for being here. It's really great to see you.
Good to see you.
Okay. Would someone like to move adjournment?
I made the motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all so much for your time this evening. Appreciate it.